Hello, I'm Pastor John Rickert from our Redeemer Lutheran Church in New Art Delaware. And this is our Romans Bible study. I'm happy you could join us. We are in the middle of chapter eight. And Paul is about to begin his discussion about predestination. This, we touched on it just a little bit last week, but we'll get it, jump in with both feet this week. But this will not be the end of our discussion of predestination because Paul continues this discussion in chapter nine. And I think he breaks into chapter 10 also. So he gives a lot for us to think about. But we will begin that thought process today. However, before we do, let's begin with prayer. Lord Jesus Christ, we give you thanks that you have promised to keep us safe no matter what this world throws at us. And we know that it throws a lot with trials as well as temptations. And then we ourselves often blunder and, and drop the ball. But we ask, Lord Jesus, well, actually, no, we just give you thanks. We give you thanks that you have kept us safe. In Christ's name we pray, amen. Okay, chapter nine, and I mean, chapter eight, and we're backing up just a hair. Covering a little bit of what we covered last week and picking up at verse 28. There Paul wrote, "And we know that for those who love God, all things work together for good for those who are called according to his purpose." And as I pointed out last time, the verses 28 to 30 is probably the classical text for election or predestination. Paul begins in English with the word and. It's actually the second word in the Greek text because it's the word death. And death never comes first in a sentence, just that's how Greek is. But when we translate into the English, we're going to put it where we would normally expect it to be. And, and that would be at the beginning. Now either translation and or but works here. What Paul has just been talking about is how we have sufferings that come our way in our life. And the creation is groaning and, and all this kind of stuff, you know, so we're thinking in terms of hurricanes and tidal waves and whatnot. As well as wars and famine and so forth and so on. He also has in there the stumbling that we have in our prayer lives. He says, you know, we don't even know how to pray sometimes. But the Holy Spirit helps us out. Says, but in spite of all that, in spite of hurricanes and fires like we have in the Northwest right now in California and whatnot. In spite of hurricanes swirling out of the Gulf, in spite of trade tensions with China, in spite of potential war here, there, and everywhere. In spite of all that, we know that for those who love God, all things work together for good, for those who are called according to his purpose. Now, as I pointed out last time, we do need to be very much aware that this is not saying all things are good. He doesn't say that. He says they are worked together for good. Also, as pointed out last time, we need to recognize that this is not good in the sense of 21st century modern America where God is promising you cars and property and all that kind of stuff. He's talking about as we're going to see eternal good being conformed into the image of Christ. So that's, that's looking towards the goal. And the goal for God in our lives is not for us to all own Cadillacs. Sorry. And those churches that make those sort of promises are simply wrong. Okay? Hope I have, well, you know, if I've offended you, I think you need to go back to the text and find out what God really is promising. Uh, so as we move on here, uh, for those, oh, uh, who love God. Now this is something unusual for Paul to phrase things this way. Usually he will speak about God loving us in Christ Jesus. But this reflects what, like what Jesus said, uh, we love him because he first loved us. So our love is still a second, a response. We respond to the fact that he loves us and we love him. But it is an apt description of a Christian. We are God lovers. So let's move on to verse 29 then. "For those whom he foreknew, he also predestined to be conformed into the image of his son, in order that he might be the firstborn among many brothers. Those whom he predestined, he also called; and those whom he called, he also justified; and those whom he justified, he also glorified." A lot of ink has been spilled on this. First thing we should notice here, and I pointed this out last time, I think also, that this says not one word about people who are going to hell. There's not a breath of a mention about predestination to hell. The Bible does not speak of it. God works all things for good. We have a good God. So, uh, other thing that I want to bring out before I start talking about this, uh, other thing, uh, here is predestined to be conformed to the image of his son. This is harkening all the way back to Genesis. Adam and Eve lost the image of God. They lost the image of the son. They lost the image of Christ. Okay. In a certain sense, it is still with us. But in the sense of original righteousness, originalist holiness, original purity, that was completely lost. It was corrupted. And we had, that's why we're totally dependent on Christ who grants us those things by grace through faith in him. What was lost by Adam and Eve is restored by Jesus. Hence, sometimes Paul will call him the second Adam or the new Adam. He is the one who restores what the first Adam lost for us. Also, it goes back to the first chapter of Romans where Paul called himself a called servant. No, that's a different place there. Uh, it's in this text, but it's not on the image. So here we have Jesus or God's good purpose to restore that which was lost by Adam and Eve. And of course, that restoration was begun in our baptism. So for those whom he foreknew, this, the word know, starting in the Old Testament and throughout the New Testament, is not just an intellectual knowledge. The Bible will say, "Adam knew his wife, and she conceived and bore a son." Well, obviously that knowledge is not just, oh, hi, my name is Adam. What's your name? Yeah. You want to go get a bite to eat? No, there's more to the word knowledge. It's a, it's an effectual knowledge. It is a relational knowledge. So, uh, that's what we're talking about here. God has a relationship. He knows us in a personal way. Now this is interesting. We have five verbs here. The first two are before the foundation of the world. So he foreknew. Before the foundation of the world, God had already established a personal relationship with his children. Now you may think, how can that be? I wasn't even born yet. That's true, but remember that God is outside of time. So he has that personal relationship with all his believers. Who knows how many more people are going to be born and come into the kingdom of Christ that he knows already in a personal way. So he foreknew and he also predestined. And a lot of people get hung up on this word. First off, again, I must point out that this is a positive thing. It is predestined to be conformed into the image of Christ. And that's a comforting thing, especially when you're struggling with, raise your hand if you ever struggled with a sin problem of some sort. Raise your hand if you've ever thought, gosh, I really dropped the ball this time. Raise your hand if you've ever thought, is this how a Christian should act or how a Christian should speak? Good news, you're predestined to be conformed into the image of Christ. This was done before the foundation of the world. Also, I think that we need to not get so hung up on the word pre in predestination and instead get hung up on the destination part. The destination is glory. The destination is eternal life. The destination is heaven. The eternal bliss, whatever way you want to say it. Let's get hung up on that destination because that's where we're going and nobody is going to be upset about that. Yes, God knew it in an effectual way before the foundation of the world. He's not going to let you slip through his fingers as he's going to say later on in this chapter. So that's, that's what Paul says here. And remember last week I read that quote from Franzmann about all those things that people speculate about. And they asked, how can God choose some and not others? How does this conform with God's, uh, love and desire to have all people saved and so forth and so on? Paul doesn't touch on those things. Those are here, and those are foreign thoughts to the text. If we stick with the text, then the text is a text of comfort. And I like that. Uh, to be conformed into the image of God, uh, as I said, in order that he might be the firstborn from many brothers. Christ, our brother, firstborn, a reference to his resurrection of the, from the dead, pointing to our resurrection from the dead on the last day, when we will be completely conformed into his image, body and soul. Verse 30, "And those whom he predestined," so he brings that back in case you forgot it, "he also called." Now, predestination and for knowledge, that's before time. Our call comes in time. And again, this happens to bring back again, uh, the very opening verses where Paul calls himself a called servant of Christ. Pardon me for a second. Been battling my nose all day long. Not exactly the hardest trial or tribulation that a person has to face in his life, but still a nuisance. Anyways, uh, he called. How did he call you? He called you with the waters of baptism. He called you through the word of God. He has, uh, chosen you that way. He has called you and he has granted you faith in that way. And you have responded to that faith and loved Jesus and trusted in Jesus. "And those whom he called, he also justified," uh, the classic Lutheran love word. This is to be declared righteous. And, uh, to have our sins pardoned. Let's go back to the word called for a second because something just occurred to me. There are some who make a distinction between God's effectual call and just God's GP call. And, uh, what they mean by that is God calls some people, but he doesn't really call them. He's not trying to save them. And then the other people who get the effectual call, those are the people that God actually called effectually. And this are for those who believe in the doctrine of irresistible grace. Notice in the text, it doesn't say effectual call. He, it's like the parable that Jesus told of the sower and the seed, where the guy, the sower goes out, he scatters some all over the place, some on the asphalt, some in the cracks in the sidewalk and so forth, uh, some in weeds. Many of them grow a little bit, though the stuff on the asphalt doesn't, but only the stuff that hits the good ground produces a crop. But the point Jesus is, uh, I'm making related to what Paul has hung, is the seed was good seed wherever it went. It was an effectual seed. The sower was trying to plant as much as he could. So the call of God, God doesn't give ineffectual calls. We can reject his call. We can turn our back on it, but the power to convert is in that call. The power to convert is in the word of God. The power of, to convert is in the waters of baptism. And if you reject it, well, the onus is on you. It's not because God crossed his fingers behind his back and said, oh, don't you want to come to heaven? Ha, 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 ha.
Would it be safe to say that there, that would, that would defy God's nature? He can't, God can't lie, deceive, pretend, change his, his mind after he said one thing and reneg on a promise that goes against his very nature?
I would say yes, but the problem with that argument is that it's an argument from logic. Just like the problem, uh, when people argue logically speaking, that God is all powerful. So if he wanted to save you, you would be saved. The reason you're not saved is because God didn't want you. How can God fail? So both arguments are logical. You know, I, I would agree with what you said and disagree with the other argument. But what we really need to do is stand on the scriptures in this particular case because
You don't read in other things.
Uh, you know, I mean, if we're talking about the nature of God, you know, he is a, it just depends on what aspect you want to talk, look at, right? Uh, I would agree with what you said. Don't get me wrong. I would definitely agree with what you said. But if I'm going to be talking to somebody who doesn't agree with that point of view, I want to stay with scripture. Not logic, uh, but your point is well, well said. I agree. Does that make sense? So, uh, so, you know, we are called and the call of God is always a call of grace, a call of power. But it is not irresistible. "And those whom he called, he justified, declared righteous," the DK group of words that we've talked about many times here in Romans, where God is, uh, justifies us, declares us, uh, righteous because we have been covered by the righteousness of Christ. And those who be justified, now, those are the two end times things. You are currently justified. You are currently, uh, called. Okay. And then the future thing here is he also glorified. Now you may say, well, wait a minute. He says he also glorified you, doesn't he? He put that in the past tense? This is of course a standard, or maybe not a course. This is a standard kind of Hebrew thing to do. For example, when Isaiah wrote about the Messiah, who wasn't going to come around for centuries, right? He said, "By his stripes we were healed, not we're gonna be, or we are healed, not we're gonna be when he comes finally." So the Bible does this often. And lots of fancy words have been attached to it. But the fact of the matter is that it, uh, we have not died and been raised on the last day yet. So that's in the future for us, but it is still our current possession in Christ. So I think it's Ephesians which talks about us already being seated with Jesus in the heavenly places. Pretty special. Do we see it? No. Will we see it? Absolutely.
But it ties in again with, with that God standing outside of time again and more of that
Yes, for God it's a reality.
But, but it's more of that comfort. It's, it's, it's all this done deal.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's why this, this, uh, doctrine that has been presented often in such terrifying ways and leave people, uh, questioning their salvation is, is just not what the doctrine is for. The doctrine is for you to walk away with, way saying, I am safe in God's hand. He's got the whole big picture in mind and he has taken care of it. And that's exactly where Paul is going to go in just a minute. Okay. So, uh, I just have one really quick quote from the formula of Concord, solid declaration, article 11, paragraph five. "The eternal election of God, or God's predestination to salvation, does not extend over both the godly and the ungodly, but only over the children of God who have been elected and predestined to eternal life." So that is one of many places where, uh, the Lutheran confessions reject this idea of double predestination. Predestination only deals with salvation. Or if I've said it, said before, if you go to heaven, it's all due to the credit of Jesus. If you go to hell, it's your own stupid fault. Okay. Verse 31. "What then shall we say to these things?" Not a bad question. All this stuff about, uh, trials and tribulations and, and weak faith. And then this comforting passage that God has got us safe, you know, and he says it, that God is for us. Who could be against us? "We have been called through the waters of baptism and justified by Christ. Though we face various trials, even struggle in our prayer life, never doubt your calling for God is for you." Now that's not in the same sense that if your daddy was a multimillionaire and he's going to buy you everything your heart wants, because many people are very short sighted about what the long run benefit is. God though is for you and your long-term benefit, your long-term good is to spend eternity in heaven with him and all the saints in glory. Okay. Then we move on to verse 32. "He who did not spare his own son, but gave him up for us all, how will he not also with him graciously give us all things?" This is first off, uh, just a standard way to present a point or to argue a point. God has done this monumental, unbelievable, stupendous thing. He did not spare his own son, but gave him up for us all. Do you think he's going to drop the ball on something small? If he has done the greatest thing, he is going to follow through. It's kind of like you have to sign your name on your test paper. You have studied and studied and studied. You get into the class and you whiz through the test without any problem. Are you deliberately going to leave your name off the test? Of course not. So God has done the stupendous thing and now he's not going to drop the ball and he's done it for you and he's not going to drop the ball for you. Okay? "He did not spare his own son, but gave him up. How will he not also with him graciously give us all things?" And again, he's not talking about a bank account. He's not talking about, uh, a home in Beverly Hills. He's not talking about, or in the Hamptons or wherever you dream of living. He's not talking about, uh, a shiny new sports car. The all things that he's talking about are heavenly things. They are his presence in our life, his Holy Spirit comforting us and so forth and so on. He graciously gives us everything we need for this life and the life to come. Verse 32, and we're moving right along here. "Who shall bring any charge against God's elect?" It is God who justifies. Okay. God's elect again is bringing back that key, a couple of verses that we looked at, uh, where we are God's elect. We are his chosen. So this brings back all that chosen people idea that you find in the Old Testament, also the Israel discussion early in Romans and how Israel is the chosen people of God. And how we as Christians are now the new Israel. So we are the chosen one, the holy priesthood, chosen nation of God. We are his Israel. You know, those who, yes, at times struggle with God as we saw earlier in these verse. But in the end he has called us, uh, and he has acquitted us or justified us. So who can bring a charge against us? The rhetorical question, because it is God who justifies, is no one. So clearly what he means is an effective charge. Because there are all sorts of charges being brought against God's elect, not only from a human point of view, but also from a, uh, a spiritual point of view. The devil charges us and accuses us and all this kind of stuff. So we're talking about an effectual card. The charge won't stick because God has justified us. It is not dependent on us. It is not because of works, but it is because of grace. "For by grace you have been saved through faith, and that not of yourself." So, uh, let's hear. So you know, this is kind of an echo of verse 31, "But here the grounds are spoken of." Why we can't be charged, God has justified. We would, when, when we enter that final court on the last day, we will stand justified by the righteousness of Christ granted to us. Verse 34. "Who is to condemn?" Christ Jesus is the one who died more than that who was raised. Who is at the right hand of God, who indeed is interceding for us. So first of course, obviously, our justification is based on the work of Christ. And, uh, his death, notice, you know, this is very, the work of Christ is preeminent in the thought of, of Paul, in the thought of our Christian life and the thought of our salvation and how we live as Christians, that we are able to love God. You know, Jesus is the reason, not just for the Christmas season, but for the Christian life, Jesus. "No one can condemn us, even though they may try, because Christ died for us and he was raised for us. And not just raised back to life to die again, but he ascended to the right hand of the Father." Now to understand that, what we mean here is a position of power and might and authority. He, he, fully God, fully divine. So that's what the right hand is. The right hand is not a place. It's not a location. It's much like I might say that Joe Biden was the right-hand man of Barack Obama. Or Pence is the right-hand man of Gerald Ford. I mean, uh, excuse me, Donald Trump or something like that. We're talking about not the location of a person physically, but their role. They have a, a function and a power and an ability to speak. To speak for and on behalf of and instead of the other person.
This interceding for us. What, what does that entail? Why, why?
Why do we need that? Okay, the, the overall metaphor here is a legal one, is it not?
Right.
Okay, who intercedes for you in a legal system?
Well, you're, you're counsel.
Your lawyer, your counsel, that's right, and then you have the accuser or the prosecutor bringing charges. And who is that? That would be of course, the devil. And so Jesus is our defender against the devil. It's like a heavenly courtroom and Jesus has a perfect record. For all of his children. So this is that interceding for us. I know we can think of it as prayer and, and that's okay. But the fact of the matter is that the overall metaphor here is a courtroom. We have like the word justification, which is a courtroom word. And, uh, we have the idea of accusation. The idea of condemnation, who's gonna condemn you and so forth. Jesus is our defense attorney, Jesus makes sure that none of these charges stick. And we are declared not guilty, not because we are really not guilty. But because Christ is not guilty and he has given us his not guiltiness. And put it on our ledger. Good question, okay? I was probably gonna gloss over that. So, uh, verse, uh, thirty-five then. Who shall separate us from the love of Christ? Shall tribulation or distress or persecution or famine or nakedness or danger or sword? So I think we can all agree that these are all pretty unpleasant things. And we would not want them in our lives. But look around in the world, are there tribulations in the world? Is there distress in the world? Is there persecution in the world? Is there famine in the world? Is there nakedness in the world? Is there danger in the world? Is there sword that is war in the world? What do you think, huh? The world has all these things, these are not good. But in all these things, God can and does work for our good. For example, who would call the Great Depression a good thing? Yet church attendance was at an all time high during the Great Depression. It has never been as high and it never was as high as it was during that decade. God used that bad thing. For a lot of people's eternal good. Lot of people in war, you'd be surprised, or maybe not, how many Christians there are in the military. When you're facing your own mortality, it's time to get serious about. Your faith in Jesus. Those are just two exam, examples. But these are all sorts of things, bad things that happen in this world because we live in a corrupted and broken world. And we live in a world with corrupted and broken people and we ourselves carry that, uh, brokenness in us. So a lot of things happen, but they cannot separate us from the love of God in Christ. It's not an abstract love. If you lose Jesus, you've lost everything. So, uh. Nothing can separate us from the love of God in Christ Jesus, our Lord. So, uh, and of course he's brought up the first part where we're talking about the trials that we go to. As it is written, verse thirty-six, for your sake we are being killed all the day long. We are regarded as sheep to be slaughtered. Knowing all these things, we are more than conquerors through him who loved us. You know, as I was a, a younger Christian, I would read that and I would think to myself. What a weird thing to say. What a really weird thing to say, excuse me for a minute. But I think I get it now, okay? Because of what he's just been talking about. It says, for as it is written, in other words, Paul is saying, I didn't make this up. I'm, you know, the fact that Christians face trials and tribulations and so forth, I didn't make this up. Look, I got another quote for you right out of the Bible. For your sake we are being killed all the day long, we are regarded as sheep to be slaughtered. This has been the experience of believers throughout time and it is no different today. The twentieth century saw more Christians murdered for their Christian faith than any other season. Uh, century by far. And the twenty-first century seems to be shaping up to be even worse as Christians are persecuted. Around the world for their faith. You think you're persecuted because somebody tells a stupid joke about you at work? Just be happy you're not living in some of these countries where they find out you're a Christian. You're thrown in jail and put on death row. So, but it cannot separate you from Christ. And that's the point here, even. Being regarded as sheep to be slaughtered cannot break the bond of God's love for you. Which I guess is why in the early church, they said it grew because it was watered by the blood of the martyrs. Because people could see that while I may be willing to kill you for my faith. Only Christians were willing to die for their faith. And all these things, we are more than conquerors through him who loved us. What does that mean? It doesn't mean that, uh, while the Roman soldier is ready to throw me to the lion's den, all of a sudden I'm going to. Float out of the arena. What it means is that our faith conquers, our faith cannot be taken from us. And on the last day we will rise and return with Christ and all the saints in glory. And we will be told, well done thou good and faithful servant. Enter the rest of your master.
It reminds me of Shadrach, Meshach and Abednego. When they're gonna be thrown in fiery furnace and they say, our God is able to save us from this. But if he doesn't, it doesn't make any difference.
We're not gonna bow down, that's right.
You know, and, and God does do this, this mighty deliverance for, you know, the sake of people. Not burning in hell for eternity.
Yeah, he does that not so much for the sake of Shadrach, Meshach and Abednego.
They're going.
That's right, he does it for Darius and all, all those other people.
But, you know. Everyone is, everyone is not delivered in that way, that's why so, there are so many martyrs for the faith.
Oh yeah, and that's true even in the Bible, you know, uh, the Bible, well, look at Stephen. You know, the stones didn't bounce off some magic force shield around him.
The babies that were murdered when Herod was trying to find Jesus to kill him.
Yes.
You know, you know, a lot of people forget that there are the. The, the martyrs who weren't even standing up for their faith because they couldn't stand up for their faith.
Right.
They just got murdered anyway.
Yeah. So, uh.
It doesn't mean that there's not evil, but like you say, because, because this broken world, it's full of evil.
Mm-hmm.
But it, it, in the long run.
Show heads of everybody who has faced some sort of evil in their life. Huh? Yeah, I see you, okay. You're absolutely right, honey. Okay, um, honey, by the way, is my wife Kitty, who also runs the computer. And comes up with these beautiful screens, by the way. I gotta tell you, when I thought about doing this, I just figured we'd have words. She does all of these beautif- beautiful screens for us, so thank you sweetheart. Okay, let's hear. Um, we, we just did thirty-six.
Thirty-seven.
So we're moving to thirty-seven.
Well, no, no, in all these things we are more than.
Conquerors.
Right.
Yes, that's what we just talked about.
Right.
Through him who loved us, and who is that? Jesus. Okay, so, uh, we move on to thirty-eight. And, uh, okay, yeah, we didn't have time to finish this last week. Uh, for I'm sure that neither death nor life, nor angels, nor rulers, nor things present, nor things to come, nor power, nor height, nor death. Nor anything else in all creation will be able to separate us from the love of God, uh, in Christ Jesus, our Lord. And I just love that passage and this is, uh. Again, I just can't, I, I, I gotta say, as we look at this. Where are we predestined? What is predestination about? Uh, for I'm sure that neither death nor life, nor, why, why won't it? Because of Christ Jesus, in whom we are predestined to get to that finish line. To be conformed into his image and none of these things in life, none of these evil things, none of the. Evil spiritual things or anything can separate us from Jesus Christ.
The, 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 the sun exploding, the earth imploding, none of.
And everything in between. And, uh, you know, a lot of people who don't like predestination, the, to talk about that. They'll love this passage anyway. And the only reason I can think of that is because it doesn't use the word predestination. But what I love here is he's talking about it, but his, his focus here is on the destination. You know, won't be able to separate us from the love of God in Christ Jesus, our Lord. And so, uh, a great comforting passage. Now, um. There are some difficult pa- we're, we're at the end of the chapter and next week we'll, we'll move into, uh, chapter nine. And when we get to chapter nine, I'm gonna be honest, uh, there are some difficult passages in that. As we deal with predestination. For example, Paul is gonna bring up the topic of God hardening the heart of Pharaoh. Does that mean that God predestined him to hell? We'll find out according to Paul, why that happened, okay? And, uh. We will, uh, uh, if you wanna look ahead, you can look at verses seventeen, twenty-two through twenty-four. Those are, 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 are the tricky ones that will have to be looked at with, uh, closer. And then, uh, okay, we already talked, I already mentioned that, so those are the things that, that we will be looking at. I don't, Kitty hasn't mentioned any questions, so I'm gonna assume we don't have any. Well, uh, we've only been going at this for about forty-five minutes, but obviously I needed to, uh, put, split this. Second half of Romans into two, so this was a three parter, first three parter. If you knew me, you would know.
That's phenomenal, but there's always sorry for one chapter.
Of any book in the Bible, let me tell you, I usually, when I'm in.
How many years did we do Revelation that time?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say that sometimes I'm lucky if I get through a verse. So with that, uh, thank you for being with us, may the Lord bless your evening. And let us conclude today with the Lord's prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever and ever, amen. Go in peace. Bye-bye.